I did reach out to John.
John, Corserman's here. He's here now.
Is he on?
Yep. We can see you, John.
You guys can see him.
Better unmute John so we can hear you.
Oh, you really want to hear me?
Yes.
Okay, John's here.
Careful what you ask for.
Okay, so we got everybody. I'll call it to order here at six o'clock. Welcome to Zoom, everybody. Here we go again. But we need to do this. We've got cases increasing in town and this is a way to keep everybody safe and we can still keep conducting city business. So we got a quorum and I'm going to forego the pledge here tonight. So let's move on to the regular agenda. Approve that. Anybody's got any questions? Any changes on this one, Brenton? I don't think so.
No changes.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Hey, Chelsea makes a motion.
Dave second it.
Dave does a second. Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 That's everybody motion approved. Prove the consent agenda. Anybody any questions on there for Jim? Otherwise I think it's.
Nope, we're pretty standard. Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Brian makes a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Chelsea does a second. Say aye. All right, all in favor say aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. All right. Approval of the minutes from November 2nd. Guess I didn't see anything on there that was out of place. That's who we hadn't missed.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, Chelsea makes a motion. Can I get a second?
Dave all second.
Dave does a second. Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay, and then the special consummate that we had on October 29th.
Are those?
Yeah, are those out there? We can put them up or no? I don't remember.
I didn't see them.
I saw them there. They're out there in the share.
Only our own SharePoint?
Yep. I don't see any changes to these.
I didn't either, but I just, everybody should take.
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right, Dave makes a motion to approve in a second.
A second.
Okay, Brian does a second. All right, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Yeah, there's the other special meeting that we had on October 30th.
Oh, I guess I was looking at the 30th. Maybe the 29th ones weren't out there, Brian.
I mean, that was, that was a really short meeting, very similar to this, so.
Correct.
Yeah.
It was actually the same topic.
Yeah.
Correct, the 30th was just again to. There were adjustments to the.
Correct that, right.
Yes.
For them. List.
So.
Okay.
This, this could cover both meetings, actually. So.
Yeah, so. All right, anybody got any changes on that? Otherwise I'm going to accept the motion to accept them.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, Chelsea's, Brian does a second. All right, all in favor say aye.
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 Right. Carries. The public comment, did we get any emails, Brenton, from anybody today?
No.
Yeah.
I did not see any. I could double check.
Yeah, because I think that's what we told people to do if you got a question, email tonight so we can. I didn't get anything on that either, so.
No, we did not have any questions or emails. To my, my, I did not receive anything in requests and questions. At the horse, either one of those, neither one have it, it looks like.
All right.
I'll double check here one more time, but I didn't see any new ones in.
Okay, fair enough. Yeah, I don't, the Zoom kind of makes it a little different with the public comment, but that's why we put the email out about the, you know, send them in so we know. Okay, I'm going to move past that then. We'll go to the sheriff's update. I don't know if, I don't know, I don't think Ross sent anything this time around.
I didn't see anything.
Yeah, I don't think so. I think they'll probably get it to us here at the middle. At the beginning of next month here, so. All right, we'll just forego that then. Let's go to the sheriff's agreement, then number 10. Got that one. Brett, you got that one?
Yep, just a second.
Yep, yep.
Okay, this item before you is a renewal of our sheriff's agreement. It's for the 2021 calendar year. We do this every year around this time of year. And it has been through the Cascione Commission on 11 to 2020. It's to maintain having two deputies. We did see, you know, we had initial conversations to look into having a third deputy, but with COVID and everything going on and county experiencing some budget cuts. We decided not to pursue that third deputy at this time. So that's like, but this contract shows for two full-time deputies. Total cost is 173,775 dollars. That's budgeted in our budget. What we've always been told by the county is how they come up with this is basically covering salary, salaries and benefits. And then they cover like cost of equipment and train. So that is where we're at. This is a slight increase from last year, but nothing drastic. Tip, typically you'll see about three to four percent increase every year. So I want to say it's about four to five thousand dollar increase from last year. Or from this current year.
Okay. Yeah, I think we expected that. It was going to go up a little bit. Anybody got any questions on this one? This is kind of boilerplate. We've gone through this almost every year or so.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Brian made a motion. Chelsea got second. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
You should probably roll call just to make sure.
Yeah, I'll do that. Okay, starting off, John.
Yes.
Dave.
Yes.
Chelsea.
Yes.
And Brian.
Yes.
Okay.
Good.
Okay, and then we'll move on to number 11 then. Jimmy, you got that one, I'm assuming?
I do, Mr. Mayor and Council. At your request, I revisited the cost estimates and layouts for Wall Avenue after some discussion we've been having with the township people in the orchard and in Westbrook. We went back and did a little more detailed cost estimate for rural section road from the river west. By doing that, the cost was a little bit over $3 million. Would be a shared use path on the south side of the road. The thought behind this was to put together a project that was a little bit more economical for the residents and less of a hit on them. Originally, we had proposed urbanizing Wall Avenue from the, basically the four-way stop west of the Cheyenne diversion. This alternative that we looked at is urbanizing from the four-way stop to the river, to the bridge and then just paving a rural section with sidewalk and shared use path from the bridge west through the third entrance to Lost River. We wouldn't go over the diversion just up to the east line of the diversion. So as you can see on the second page of my second and third page, it's just a couple of cross-sections. Difficult to show that first one has curb and gutter and the second one is got the ditches on the side. There'd be no storms sewer on that, so. For the first phase, as we're calling it, we've got an estimated project cost of around 1.6 million. And for phase two, with the rural section with the curb and gutter, without the curb and gutter, ditches would be a little bit over $3 million for total project cost of a little over four and a half million, 4.65. So roughly 5,000 or a little bit more per equivalent unit based on 988 equivalent units total. And that is with the district being half a mile north and half a mile south of the roadway, so. I did have some discussions with the administrator this afternoon about the potential for a hybrid section from the bridge west to west to the entrance to Lost River, and we are going to explore that a little bit more in, in the future, so.
Is there actually enough room in that Westbrook area for both sides with this whole width? Or is that going to be a restricted area?
It'll be a restricted area, but this is kind of the general layout of it. It's, it's going to be a little bit more.
Well, the, the urbanized section that would be east of the bridge would be this concrete with curb and gutter, right?
Mm-hmm.
And then this would be the section west.
Yes. Yep, there would have to be some, some modifications at that tight spot along Westbrook, but this is kind of the overall just of it, just to put it out in front of you guys.
Does it save much if we even cut back to, to even have one path instead of both paths on both sides of the road?
This, the paths are pretty negligible overall. They're incidental to the cost. Yeah, I, I would say if we go forward, Ryan, we would, we wouldn't put that path on the north side, west of the, west of the bridge, but we would do a shared use path on the south side.
Right.
Yeah.
Because that would connect to the existing path that goes across the bridge now.
It would, and then we would tie that in on Wall Avenue on the phase one side would have the path also.
Yep.
So this item is for your information, just we've been working on it going forward with it, looking at potential ways of a more economical project for the residents that paves the road and improves the quality of the road, so.
So this, this 4.6 is comparable to the, was it like almost eight that we had before?
Um. That sounds, sounds correct.
I thought, I thought it was like 7.5 to eight before, so this, this is almost half of what was what was proposed earlier.
Yeah, it's a little bit more than, a little bit more than.
So the, the biggest question at this point is how many equivalent units to include, you know, based on the, the size of that district.
Correct.
Whether it's a citywide or it's a, you know, half a mile north, south.
The other thing that isn't accounted for is the horse part two. We're still, that is out further than what we're, they're treated as a one right now.
Yeah, so when we're talking about the equivalent units, we're just, this was the half mile either side, right, Jimmy? That's what we were talking about for this one.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
And we still have a ways to go before we dive into how we think it should be assessed.
We do.
Yeah.
Right.
We're just trying to develop a.
Yeah. Right.
So, so there is a question in the chat that says, are you considering a tiered district within the assessment district?
Definitely open to it. We haven't done any type. We have done some tiered ones with sewer in the past and it's something that could be utilized on this. As far as for sure, it would be information will be presented to the special testing commission and then it would be acted upon by, by them.
Okay.
And just so we're, so we're clear for everyone understands with that, what, can you just briefly explain that, Jim?
So if you were immediately adjacent to the road, you'd be assessed to maybe 100% and then one block off, maybe 90, two blocks off, 80 or some percentage less the further away you get from the, from the roadway.
Okay.
Yep.
And, and all these numbers do not include if the city chooses to use some of our sales tax infrastructure. This would be a type of project that we've done that before. So there is dollars and cents that would come off the top of this cost if we took this approach to doing this road.
Right, correct.
Yep. Okay, anybody else got any other questions on this one? This is something that kind of precipitated out of the last meeting that we had with the, the Apple Orchard and the Westbrook folks to try and see if we could come up with a way to make that road doable. For a while, you know, it won't be the, more than likely it won't be the permanent road, but it would be one that would last long enough to, you know, we have something to work with at this point. So. Um. Otherwise.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I just got asked, you know, questions, go ahead.
So there, we are looking for approval of this at this point. It's
No.
Another data point.
Yep, this is another data point. Something we were trying to get an idea if we could, if we could tone this down a little bit on something that we would all would agree is doable. This would, this would be a toned down version of what we were initially looking at.
And Jim, how does this more urban section compare to say like 52nd Avenue as an asphalt road for many, many years with a lot of construction equipment driving on it?
So we are looking at doing some stabilization of the subgrade underneath, either be it a cement stabilization or a chemical stabilization to kind of add some more strength to the road in anticipation of that additional traffic and the construction traffic. We did set up counters on the road a couple of weeks ago, so we have a count of how many cars are going along Wall Avenue. And we're going to be setting up our camera to determine the turning movements and the need for turn lanes and stuff. Based on that, we're going to do that shortly. So it will be designed, we have a geotechnical onboard too, as far as the existing soil conditions. So we can design it for the anticipated construction loading too.
Okay. All right, any other questions? All right, Jim, thanks for putting that together. And I think like us, we'll probably be getting together here soon with some of the Westbrook and the Apple Orchard representatives and probably go over this with them a little bit more too, so. Along with some other things, so. All right.
Thank you for working that, Jim. Good work.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate that. All right, then speaking of which, we'll move on to number 12. What I'm going to recommend on number 12, guys, is that we table that discussion till our next meeting. I will read, we did get a note from Jack Dwyer here. You can see what it said there. Basically, Jack is in favor of the annexation. And he does give reasons and explains that in there. That was sent to everybody, so. As to why he would, he would prefer to go through with the annexation as well. But as far as like for number 12 right now, we want to have a little bit more discussion with the Westbrook and Apple Orchard group. I'd like to meet with them again this week. I'm trying to get some time here, hopefully Wednesday or Thursday. Meet with their representatives again and kind of go over what kind of what Jimmy was talking about and some other things that we've discovered here over the last week. And talk about that. And I'll bring this back up again at our following meeting, first one in December. So.
Brian, Brian, real quick, Brian, there's a question of can you show the Dwyer letter again?
Yeah, let's put it up there for a little bit. It's our biggest chance to read it. And understand what that's about.
I guess we should be clear that yes, Jack is a developer in the, in the Lost River area, but also he is a resident in that area, correct?
Correct.
Okay, just, just to be clear for everyone that's on.
Right. Yep. So. Okay.
All right.
Yep. So anyway, I'm going to ask for a motion to table number 12.
So moved.
Second.
Makes a motion. Chelsea does a second. All in favor say aye.
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 All right. Okay, move on to 13.
Good evening, council members. What you have before you is a second reading of a zone change. If you recall, this was for Lakeview Heights, third edition. Lots one, two, and four from C1 to C2. This would be the second reading. Nothing has changed and we haven't received any further public comment, so staff would recommend approval as stated in the staff report.
Motion to approve.
Second by Dave.
John made a motion. Dave did a second. Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. All right, move on to 14. Who's got, Brett, you got that one?
Yep.
Yeah.
Hey. What you seen at the last couple council meetings was ordinance establishing where we can actually purchase water from entities such as Castro rule. That has been approved first and second reading. Now what you see tonight is the actual user agreement with, between Castro and the city of Horace. A couple of things to touch base on, just to kind of see where this has gone through. Council member Schmidt and I, Jim, Bowman, and Lucas Coker, the four of us met with Castro and discussed this agreement. There are a couple of minor changes, changes that we had from what they originally proposed to what, what, what you see in front of you. Neither party had issues with changes that were suggested. But mainly what this is, is agreement, it's a 20-year agreement. They originally proposed a 40-year agreement. And outlines rates, what we'd have our first year rate is 375 per thousand gallons and then second year 425 per thousand. And then after that, we would pay the, whatever the municipal bulk water rate is per the Castro water users agreements. Currently, what that is, is 455 per thousand gallons. That is intended also to help the city with being able to get those capital funds to be able to do some Marley improvements and different things like that and our connection to Castro in the first place. We'd be responsible for establishing the meter pit location and gain that meter in there. And then after that, Castro would maintain it. And like I said, identify is just basically who is responsible for what costs. We pretty standard for when we'd have to pay our bill to Castro. And formalizes us having a purchases, purchase with Castro. It does identify in exhibit A, the maximum monthly gallons. We've worked with our public work staff and Jim, or we're saying their staff worked to identify this and really hash out whether the peak flows or how much we really would need at the highest points. So what they came up with, 6 million gallons for a month, per month, peak usage, 250,000 gallons per day. And then maximum full rate, 700 gallons per minute. That's still quite a bit of water. But if we do have to have any changes or if we have demands higher than that, we're still able to have discussions Castro and as they indicated during our discussions, they're not going to not service us because the more water they move through to us, the more that, more revenue for their, for their organization. So if you had any other questions, detail the agreement, you know, Lucas or I could answer them, but just want to touch base on this. And if you're comfortable with this agreement, we can move forward.
Brenton, just a quick question, those numbers that you're showing then, do you have a general percentage above what we're currently at, that those numbers in terms of?
Jim, can you highlight?
Or Jim, I guess, yeah.
Yeah.
This is based on 2021's production and use by the city. This is completely, this is based upon what the city of Horace is using right now. We went back through 2021, went through all the data, found our peaks and based everything off of the peak. And then Adam went and did some running of the plant to come up with the peak flow rate with the pumps running and all that. So this is current to 2021. As of right, as of right now, we maybe have to do a little tweaking with the growth, but this is the data that we've been able to use and extrapolate, so.
But they're willing to, to increase, you said, Brenton, if needed. So if, say, we got a couple of developers in the service area.
What, what they've indicated is if we, if horse grows faster, they're, they'll be working with us. So like I said.
I mean, today, today we typically use around 42 million, 42, 43 million gallons. You know, and, and let's assume for a moment that the 6 million gallons is, is what happens all year. Then we're at 72 million. So essentially they're giving us 72 million gallons a year from a volume perspective. And, you know, obviously that can be changed, you know, through negotiation, but they, they just need to know the volumes so that they can size they can supply our expected needs.
Yep.
June was the high water user this year.
All right, thank you.
Yeah. Jim, did Jerry get ahold of you today?
Jerry did not get ahold of me today.
Okay, so Sean texted me today and said Jerry was going to contact you because he had questions about these numbers. But Sean said to, if the city council wants to approve this agreement, that's fine, but Jerry had some questions about the numbers. So those, just so everyone knows, those might change.
Okay. All right, anybody else got any other questions on this? I think we've kind of been over this a lot. Now we just kind of got some fine details here, but. So.
Motion to approve the agreement as written.
Okay. Brian makes a motion. Who did a second?
John.
John, okay.
Long time coming. We needed this a long time ago.
I know. All right, so Brian made a motion, John did a second, so all in favor say aye.
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 Everybody so unanimous passes. All right, good. Let's get that, it'll be nice to get that going. Okay, let's move on to 15 then. Jim, you've got that one.
I do, Mr. Mayor. This is the balancing change order for street improvement district 2005 dash two roots addition and the miscellaneous street patching project. The project is complete. The contract is being balanced with the as constructed quantities. This change order was for a deduct of the amount of $2,267.45. Just to let's see, we underran adjusting utilities by a little bit. Removal payment, we just had, we had an estimate of how much we were going to be replacing and we underran that by just a little bit, not, not by much. So like I said, this change order just balances the contract with the as constructed quantities and it's good to see a negative change order every so often.
Yep, it is good to see that.
Like this.
I'm sure John's smiling there too. He's got to be.
Move to approve the change, the final change order.
All right. Dave made some motion. Who did a second? Who did the second?
John.
John, okay. All right, all in favor say aye.
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 Perfect, okay, motion carries. All right, Jimmy, you got the next one?
Yes, the next we have on the agenda is the water sewer storm and street improvement district 2021 dash one, Southdale Farms, third edition. If you go to the next page there, Brian, this is the project location is immediately north of the Southdale Farms first edition. We have received a petition for improvements for this by the developer, New Horizon Homes. The plat is in the process of being, being reviewed and approved at this time. What we're doing tonight is we're creating the district. So as you can see on the next page, the red dotted line is the district boundary. The boundary is north to 70, 64th Avenue. This project will have a potential for storm sewer that is of a regional component and will be able to handle or potentially handle some storms sewer from outside of the immediate benefit area. The immediate benefit area is kind of where like where we just showed in the, in the previous one. And this, this project, like I said, could, could handle some more storm sewer or some other, maybe a street, a street portion of the project to a larger area. So in an effort to not, not kind of handcuff ourselves to a smaller district, this is a little bit larger. So this is the district.
Why, why this little jog here, Jim? Is that encompassing the road?
It's, it's got to do with tracing of the lines on the right away on County Road 17.
Oh, interesting.
If we don't maybe increase the line thickness, it wouldn't look so bad.
Okay.
Well, a little wide line.
We're assess, we're assessing the road for some of this?
Well, it, it, it all depends on the way the right away is, I couldn't run 17, there's a, it's kind of a mishmash, so.
Um, do you guys know, I'm assuming that north of the project area, which goes then all the way to 64th, that generally is owned by the developer as well, correct?
It is.
How about the area that goes kind of, is that a potential road to the east of that, I guess? Is that his as well? Is that all of that area owned by Horizon?
It, it, their, their owners are New Horizon Homes, Fargo, West Fargo Public Schools and the La Horace Park District. So right, those two kind of bigger lots along that what is going to be 66th Street.
The north one is the school. Okay, and one's a park.
And then the south one is the park, yeah. So the existing residences along 64th are, we're not including that or the Vista one. We get on the opposite side of the hill there. The flow goes the other way for, for storm sewer. But if there were to be some improvements made to sixty-sixth, we'd need to be able to assess that out to the adjacent land. That's why we ballooned over just a little bit to the east.
Okay.
But for right now, this is the only area for putting in the second addition. But the infrastructure would be built such it, it could support this whole area.
Yeah, there will be components of the project that, that could be.
The, thus the larger size of the district boundary.
Yep, it's the same as when we did the first edition. We had a bigger district for the sanitary sewer. And this would be a storm sewer component or maybe a, a street component.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the district.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Chelsea makes a motion, David is a second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Everybody, alright, going on to B then.
Oh, sorry.
Motion to, I mean, do we need to go over it? I don't know.
Yeah, it's the uh, creation of the preliminary engineering report will outline the existing conditions. The proposed improvements and a detailed cost estimate for the, for the project, so.
Pretty standard.
Yep, pretty standard. It's part of the process.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Who did the second, Brian?
Yeah, correct.
Alright, so um, Chelsea made a motion, Brian did a second, so all in favor, say aye.
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 Alright, motion carries, so, alright. Jim, we're just putting more work on your plate, alright. It's alright. Seventeen.
Hey, we're, we're creating our first in project for twenty twenty-one, so it's, it's already begun.
Alright, we'll move on to seventeen then, guys. Seventeen is uh, water sewer storm and street improvement district twenty twenty-one dash two. Terror Gardens third edition, same song and dance on this one. As you can see, the project is located just to the east of the existing Terror Gardens and Terror Garden second edition. Uh, somewhat adjacent to drain twenty-seven. In the middle of there, you can see a pond surrounding that is the park. Terror Gardens Park is scheduled for construction in twenty twenty-one, so it's going to be another um, park improvement district out there. I mean, as you can see, we've got Wall Avenue going all the way back to seven and a half street and Park Drive going back as far. As these subdivisions have been growing to the east, we've been paving out the city streets. Um, from the west to the east to these developments to limit the amount of gravel roads. So that's why it kind of looks a little bit goofy. The, the exact improvements will be more in the uh, more eastern part of it. But there will be a component on wall and Park Drive too, so. This will be a residential subdivision. Uh, the district on this one is, is you're coming up pretty much the same thing. There's uh, the first edition is already paid for extending Wall Avenue and Park Drive. So they're excluded from, from this one, but we did include the second edition, which is a plan, a P U D. That is in the upper left-hand corner of this. There, they do have access onto that act, what's called an access road on here. Currently, that access road is just a gravel road to the stormwater pump station. And access to the pond for public works and maintenance, so. Uh, we have received a petition from the developer. It is peaceful plains holding. And for these improvements, and they are the uh, only. I believe peaceful plains uh, is, in B R development and the park are the only. Land or, and the city of Horace. The pond is the city of Horace lot, so those are the properties within this development subdivision.
Do we know like a per, a percentage at all about the um, what are we? The third edition, like what percentage of, of um, like building permits and stuff are done from the first and second edition?
I do not. Uh, maybe, maybe I, I don't.
Eric, do you have that number?
Yeah, unfortunately, I don't have that number immediately available, but I'd be more than happy to look it up for you and email it to you later.
Just be interesting to see, you know, how quickly these are filling when we're looking at these other additions.
And it, I, I was wanting the same thing. So is there, have they submitted a plat for how many new lots? How this is going to be subdivided?
Yes, the plat is in the uh, in the process, yep.
Approximately how many new home, is it single family home or is it multi-family or what is it?
This one is single family. Let me bring up. The plat.
So it's similar to Terror Garden first?
It would be similar, yep.
So it's probably in that neighborhood of seventy to eighty new lots, new homes.
I, yeah, I would say you're, you're, you're pretty close.
Yeah, Jim and the council, if you find it helpful, uh, it, it's sixty lots, uh, four blocks.
Okay.
Just trying to count fast enough. Then the line started moving.
I'll make a motion to approve the district.
I'll second it.
Chelsea makes a motion, David is a second, so all in favor. What's got?
Bye.
Bye.
Okay, everybody was in on that one, uh, so that passes.
I motion the resolution for directing the preparation of the engineer's report and cost estimate.
Okay, Dave makes a motion. Brian is a second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That passes, alright. Good. Alright, Jimmy Mills will pick it up here on the, your status report. Apparently it's uh, apparently it's on my shoulders, I guess.
Yeah.
Good for me, I guess. So the first thing I have underneath this project status report is the transportation alternative grants and the applications for the years twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. The DOT administers the transportation alternatives grants. And they are for fiscal years, I guess, at twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. So I did prepare memo. I don't know if you have that, Brian, or not, but um, I can summarize it. So um, a couple of weeks ago, city administrator, community development director and council member Chelsea Johnson. And planner Matt Lawer and myself, we met to discuss the projects and which ones we felt had the most merit. In the grant scoring. All these projects are presented to Metro cog. Where they are scored for the metro and then sent onward to the Department of Transportation for their. Review and approval for funding if so, if so. So uh, multiple projects were discussed at that time. We talked about various shared use paths. We talked about some pedestrian crossing facilities and some improvements to that. And we had talked about some improvements within the city. So the projects that that group decided were most favorable was. Uh, County Road seventeen shared use path phase three, which is an extension along. Um, County Road seventeen from the roundabout north to seventieth avenue into Southdale Farms. As you're aware, the city got, received a grant for transportation alternative funds for phase two, which is from. Eighty-first avenue to the roundabout.
And what year Jim, Jim will that one be? It's not next summer, right? It's the, it's twenty twenty-two as well.
Right, so we'll bid that project with the DOT in late, late twenty twenty-one or probably early twenty twenty-two. For construction in the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-two year, so. Uh, the other project that was discussed was it's called the multimodal improvements along the Center Avenue and Thue Court near the senior center. These projects have to be sponsored by the Cass County Commission. As the city of Horace is not five thousand people in population yet. So a letter was prepared for the Cass County Commission. It was on their consent agenda earlier today to be the project sponsor for these. And the, I'll just read you a little bit from the letter that was written to them. It says, the second project is a shared use path is pretty self-explanatory. We just continue going north. This, this other option, this multimodal improvements is a little bit more of a different animal. So um, this project is designed to enhance pedestrian safety around three key community facilities. In the original town site of Horace, the community center, the event center and the Horace Fire Station and Freed Park. The project stretches along Center Avenue from Mickey Mouse Avenue to Nelson Drive. Will consist of installing colored concrete pavers or something similar. Landscaping and new striping within the existing roadway to denote that the roadway has a high pedestrian and bicycle activity. And to create a sense of shared space. One thing that we've found in the past with applying for some of these grants is they get kind of. Uh, how do you want to say it? Stale bike path from here to there, well, gap closure inside out from here to there. And nothing really. Different, something to stand out. And that's where this group of people that I mentioned earlier. Thought this multimodal improvement was a good way of improving. The pedestrian connectivity around the senior center, Thue Court, the event center, Freed Park. There are a lot of people that use that Center Avenue as a crossing from the west side of the city to the east side of the city. There's bus drop off at the senior center. There's a lot of kids I see outside the window coming across and, and going. To the different areas and. I also, when I'm at the park board meetings, they talk a lot about Freed Park and its use for softball. And there's even more, there's potential for more use there. They're putting some money into that facility. Putting in some new backstops, whatever else. So I think there'll be a more use and more pedestrian activity around that area. So it, it's a, it's kind of a different concept. It's uh, something that I think will get the second, a second look. From some of these uh, people who review it. Like I said, it is a Metro cog project, or well, shouldn't say Metro cog project, but it's a, they have to review it and score it. And um, something different, I think is really good. They have a scoring matrix that involves transit for quite a few of their projects. And Horace just doesn't have any transit, so it's difficult to compete without that transit component. But with these uh, good projects, good support, Chelsea's working on getting some letters of support right now. And we've been very fortunate in the past to get these. We've got a TA grant, we got an RTP grant. So it's not unheard of to get these in and um, forward with it. So um, I don't need any type of action from you. I'm just, this is a FYI that we are putting in for these projects. And they will go to Metro cog, they're due December uh, second for their, for their review, so. The next thing on my list is the Lakeview seventieth and sixty-third projects. I am happy to report that liquidated damages were stopped on November ninth. That means that the street lighting is done. That means that the pavement marking is done. That means the signage is done. Wow. It's, it's, uh, it was a monumental day. We didn't quite set off fireworks, but in Horace tradition, we missed one. So anyways, um, the remainder of that project is working on some punchless items. There were quite a few punchless items and they've been, the field staff has been going through those pretty diligently. Let's see here, anything of note from the field staff, let's see. Couple repairs, we've got a couple repairs, pavement markings. Turnero, street signs are complete except for one intersection where they had seventy-ninth avenue going north, south and east and west. So nothing like confusing. We're not sure how that happened yet, but three D managed to make one extra sign that they shouldn't have. We'll just call that the micro roundabout. Boy, definitely don't start there, that's for sure, so. Um, yeah, so I'm, I'm glad to, glad to tell you guys that that liquidated damage has been stopped. And that is substantially complete minus some seeding and the fences going up around the pond as we speak. Next thing I've got is a water connection to Cass Rural. You uh, had talked about that earlier, item number fourteen. The, I was informed today that the preliminary site survey, not a handout survey, but a, a site survey was completed. And it's sent on to drafting for workup. We are still in the agency response period for our federal requirements. We have to solicit federal agencies to get their comments. You're still in that period. It should be ending here shortly. And then we get into the resident comments. We're still anticipating bidding that project early spring for a fall twenty twenty-one completion. We are working on exhausting all our avenues for funding in order to not use special assessments of user rates. Uh, right now, we are on the drinking water state revolving fund intended use plan. And that money is like two percent over, over the duration of the term, so a low interest rate. Um, same thing with the water main replacement. Survey is not yet complete on that, but they are working hopefully to get that done this week. We are still also, we've got that one going concurrently with the connection to Caster Rule as far as soliciting our agencies in that. We've been working together with concert with those two and we've been getting those as we come along. So um, this one has the same, same type of schedule. The anticipate construction is twenty twenty-one with a one-year. Construction period. This is what we had talked about before, where there's going to be a replacement period, project in Horace proper. Eight valves curb stops in third and fourth street and then some gate valves in the Arrowwood subdivision, so. Um, Southdale Farms is substantially complete. We're working on some punchless items now and then getting the private utilities in. Field staff met with Cass County Electric this morning to talk about a transformer location. And the street lights are still being pulled on that one, so. Let me see. Just so you know, I was sent a change order today, earlier today. Um, I'm going to just bring it up to you. It's not a motion item for tonight. I didn't get it in. It didn't come until today, but I wanted to get it in front of you. It's for Cub Creek. Um, Cub Creek has a regional stormwater pond on the south side of the development. And south of that development was a, a low spot. And we noticed that earlier this summer, there was quite a bit of water being held south of the pond. And the developer, Don Deppert and, and myself and field staff reviewed it earlier this year. And determined that that area with, that's holding water right now is a field and it will be park. It is plotted for a park right now. And it was determined that it would be best to install a area drain into the stormwater pond. So the amount that the contractor is requesting on that is a little bit under fourteen thousand dollars. Um, he did provide a breakdown of his costs. Everything seems to be pretty much in line. The one thing that I will tell you is. If we, if you have any heartburn on it, let me know right now. I, I just, if we can get it turned around. They could possibly get it done yet this week is what I was told. So maybe if you're not opposed to it, we could discuss it and, and act upon it. I don't know, Corey, it's, I just have it here. I, I got it earlier today. It was kind of a last minute thing, but it's pretty self-explanatory. What are, what are your thoughts?
I mean, I guess.
Brian, you're on mute if you're going to say something.
Did Jim, is he gonna, is he gonna expand on the volume of storm water that's going to go into that storage pond?
So. No, it was intended to go.
Finding those two areas or is it just still going to stay, remain separate?
So the area that's holding water isn't very large, but it's enough that it creates a little bit of a duck pond. In the water, it just doesn't go anywhere. And if it were to be planted, it kills off the crop. So um, this is factored into the size of that pond. It's not, it's not going to overtax it. And the fourteen thousand dollars is, is well within our contingency on, on Cub Creek.
But is he, i- is the developer saving money by, you know, are, are we eliminating ones? You know, instead of having two water storage ponds, are we having one combined one? I, I guess I'm missing.
No, this isn't, this isn't a, a storage area that we're trying to drain. This is just a, a spot that doesn't drain currently.
It's a low spot.
It's a low spot. There you go, Corey. Yeah, that's right. It's a low spot in the field.
Yeah.
So it's just basically utilizing or getting rid of the water out of that low spot?
Yep, yep.
It doesn't, doesn't naturally drain today, so it's just installing a, a drain in that area to get it into that stor- stormwater holding pond.
Yep, exactly. So the berm on the edge of this holding pond is, is. Higher than the, the adjacent land around it. And it's just not making its way to drain twenty-seven.
I mean, it, it, it's going to be, it would be an issue in the future. This would have to be done. Because if it's a low spot, it's going to hold water even after the, you know, home construction starts. So something needs to be done.
Well, this will be a park lot. So before something gets done with the park, yeah, they're going to need a way to get rid of that.
Oh, right, but the, the thing. Oh, right. But the the thing is, is the cost of installing this would be higher later than it would be if we do it right now, right?
Uh, potentially, yep.
If the equipment and the and the, you know, crews are out there doing that kind of work, are they pretty much done with that kind of work?
Well, this would be done, this would be done by the same contractor that's doing eighty first Avenue. Right now, we haven't got a defined timeline from them on eighty first Avenue. We talked to them earlier today and we kind of got a uh wishy washy, yes or no, would have liked to know on three weeks ago. Well, we're past that. I get it. Um, so this would be done uh potentially in in the same time as that.
Yeah, I guess I got no, I don't really have a problem when I do the change order tonight. I I don't really see any issue with that.
Okay, so so this would be a change order for fourteen thousand dollars to Dakota Underground. For install installing an area inlet in the southwest corner of the pond, outlet into the pond. There is to alleviate flooding in the field south of the Cub Creek Pond.
This was, this was requested by the developer and.
This had been in discussion with the developer and um earlier.
And this would be included in the included in the assessment district that's already there.
Correct. Yep. And we've got the funds to do it.
Okay, all right. Yep, they've if they've got the funds and the contingency and so forth to handle this and that that makes sense.
We do.
So, okay, with that, then I'll look for a motion to accept the change order.
So move.
Brian makes a motion, Chelsea does a second. Okay, I'll roll call this one just because where we're at. John? Chelsea?
Yep.
Dave?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Yeah, motion carries. Okay, Jim, you got anything else for us, sir?
I do not.
All right, good. Okay, thank you. Hey, Brent, you're up.
Okay, uh, few items to give you an update on. One, uh, Jim and I met with uh some folks from Cass County Electric. Uh, cooperative to discuss franchise agreement with them. Get that updated. What we found out is we cannot find any agreement uh between them. Uh, pass agreement that I could find for electric is actually with Artele Power, not Cass County Electric. So we met with the their CEO and a couple of other staff members there to discuss establishing that franchise agreement. I will be working with Lucas to get that squared away. Uh, but overall, good good conversation and they didn't seem to have any issues with uh with the concept of getting that established, that squared away. So. Uh, you should be seeing a proposed contract within the next month or so. Uh, another one is.
Brenton?
Yep.
One question related to that. Um, so I I got pinged asking, does that mean our utility rates will go up? Or or is that amount of money already being collected by these utilities?
Yep, that would not be, or typically, they wouldn't be able to collect that money unless we have it in our franchise agreement with them. Uh, and if a utility decides to charge that franchise fee, that's their choice. The agreement allows it to where typically those agreements will say that they can charge that, but they don't have to. But I haven't seen utility not charge it. So when when the ordinance is called for it. So uh like the gas one. They'll get communication out for the gas one. They also have to get approval from the Utilities Commission. Uh, once they get that approval done, then they'll notify their customers that there'll be change in the rate. And that that'd be reflected. So most most common practice is the utilities pass that through to their customers. Uh, this is a common, common fee. Uh, franchise fee is typically very common uh with utility. Utilities in cities. Um, we just haven't had it in Horace. So if you look at West Fargo, Fargo, uh, Wapton, those are examples of communities that have them already in place. Yep, also met with last week and met with the Fargo E D C. Uh, we really haven't had discussions with them before, but we were starting to get on their radar more. So we had a good good productive conversation. We'll be meeting with them again in the future uh and probably invite them to that co- development group. Uh, we'd like to get that group formalized soon. So we'll be bringing that to council in the near future. Um, but that'll be a, the Fargo E D C will be a good group to have that kind of development group for our city interact with. Uh, they focus on primary sector businesses. So more your industrial or manufacturing of goods, things like that. Um. And then the last item I had is update on the cares funding. As you may recall, little while back, we requested a reimbursement from Cass County of cares dollars. Uh, those cares dollars were tied to, were tied to law enforcement reimbursement for salaries and benefits. It's a wages and benefits for uh the deputies and Cass County has gotten a total of, or will receive approximately eight point five million dollars through a formula. Uh, from the state on this. Uh, we've requested uh reimbursement of just over, just under ninety eight thousand dollars. Uh, we met with the Cass County Administrator, uh Blake Crosby, like you say, he's the executive director. Terry Trainer, the associate counties director and other contract cities within Cass County that contract for services. Um, what Robert Wilson, the county administrator proposed was that they would share or sub allocate seventy one percent of the monthly contract cost over ten, over ten months worth of reimbursement. That comes out to just over ninety nine thousand dollars for Horace. And that there was a discussion at the Cass County Commission meeting today. They rejected that request and uh, they said that they do not have to share those dollars and like I said, denied our request. Uh, I'll be reaching out to Blake Crosby uh from Lake of Cities to see what further steps we could take on that because the intentions of those dollars are to share them accordingly with the contract cities. And then also, um, the state legislature stressed no double dipping. And that's something that we're going to be asking about because uh our contract has always been under understanding that we are, that we're basically paying for the salaries, the wages, benefits of those deputies. So we're trying to get those dollars reimbursed for the city since the county got paid for ten dollar, ten months worth of law enforcement time. We're trying to get some of that uh to reimburse the city. So. I'll keep you posted if we have any other changes on that.
Okay, good. Anything else?
Nope.
All right, so we'll go to portfolio reports. Um, I did an interview today on the radio with the Air One that was recorded. Uh, we'll be playing that. I don't know, they usually get that sometime in January or February. They'll do it, uh, play it, but I'll let you guys know when that's gonna be aired. Um, so you can enjoy that. Um, saw that I had the Chamber of Commerce spotlight city deal here. Did that, I don't know, it's three weeks ago now. They've put it out there. So if you want to look at that, that's on the FM Chambers site for a spotlight on the membership. And uh, we had a little, we had a little bit of fun doing that one, which is good. Um. I am, uh, when Jimmy got those numbers now today on the on the road, I'm gonna try and get together with the representatives from the Westbrook Bunch and the Apple Orchard. And uh, we'll sit down and have another conversation here sometime this week. I'm trying to, like I said, get my calendar open here. I wanna try and do a Wednesday or Thursday and I'll reach out to them, get that set up. Uh, we can continue those discussions. So that's what I've got. John, you got anything to add here?
Yes, I do. Um, you know, as we're going through this process of searching for a city engineer. I think it's time that we evaluate, you know, the city engineer is not going to take care of all our needs. We still need a firm to be working with. I feel that it's time that we review what we, who we're working with now. Is there a change we need to make? I believe we've all been talked to and approached by other engineering firms. I think it is vital that we we look at it, investigate what is our best option. Uh, do we need to put out an R F P and do an official or just keep it through a couple of close ones? Um. I'd like your input from everybody else, but it is something that I think we've all talked about and we have not followed through and done it. It should be done periodically and I don't think we've done that and it's time that we do it. So I'd like your other feedback and not make it a long discussion. Uh, we're not gonna solve it right now, but what should be the steps that we move forward with this?
Okay. Yeah, I I guess we can have those conversations, John, probably not right here now, but I agree. We can, we can certainly talk about that and uh get some feedback and see where we go with it. Um, I'm assuming that the last time we did this was probably when you started, right? I'm thinking you first got on the council is when they went through that exercise?
Yes.
Yeah, so. Okay, I agree. Something to look at. John, you got anything else you want to add in?
Uh, that is it for right now.
Okay, uh, Dave?
Uh, I guess the only thing is just to, you know, as John has stated, there has been some difficulties finding, you know, engineering staff, those types of things. So I think it is a is a good thing just to review um our direction of a internal engineer plus other things. And I know that Brent and I have had a number of discussions and with yourself as well, Corey. So I I think it is a good to, good point to pre to look at as it has been a number of years.
Okay. Okay, sounds good. Uh, Chelsea?
I wanted to add about the shared use path. I have my computer, my internet's been bad today, so I had to use my hotspot and get back in. So I'm not sure how much Jim said, but I did want to note that we were looking at continuing the path on the east side of seventeen so that we can grab more of those newer developments and try to connect to sixty fourth a little bit easier. And maybe into um Deer Creek.
Okay. No, that sounds good. I mean, we all know, we want to try and have more paths and hook up, uh, you know, more bike track, any type of path we want to try and hook up with the met- with the metro on that. So the more we can do, the better.
And when we, when we looked at the options, um, you know, we we definitely reviewed a lot of good options from interstate. They um, Matt, you know, gave us about eight, seven or eight options, I think. Um, we had a good discussion on all the, all the options. And um, so it wasn't just pull, pull a straw.
Okay. Sounds good. Well, good. I guess that I think that's gonna be great when we get that done. No doubt about it. Anything else you want to talk about or?
No.
Yeah. Brian, what you got?
Nothing new to add.
Okay. Well, then I think we've gone through the list, gentlemen and ladies. So uh, what do we want to do? I'm gonna call for an adjournment. John, who's got the second?
Second by Dave.
Dave, okay, all in favor, say aye. All right, sounds good. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Bye, everyone.